بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم السلام عليكم و رحمة الله و بركاته ولا ليال عاو كوسور دواذا هبين كانو نغوتال جلني ان تاگيرنو ولا كان اسد عليويت او ورديا اسکول بوركا ايدن پراري كاسو اه وحن وقت دير وباهنين الا ساغاشما يدي بن ماشان دجنين كومليهين وح عدأ اسکول بوركا ولا سيدي كانسلكا ولا ميل كلو و مهيمه وحن اسكان هيداد اسكا غاربرادتاه مركا وحن لجاري وقتيانك غودبيلاهين مرحلة دازا نكوجرنئي مركا وحن لو باهنياي تاگيراديننا لين عول باينان نغربستاكتان هولو بدن با نغصو صعودا مركا الباب هالغرايو اما داد هالقادو اما العق هالبحييو اما التلفن هالو وهادلو نين كانو وح وباهنيا وحن لو حيلو قابنكر سيو وصوب حوم مداه او اد ياد وباهن مركا وامها تنتين Good evening ladies and gentlemen Welcome to this event which is designed to support our brother Assad Ali Wade his candidacy for the school board This has been something that was long due We don't have any representation in the school board or in the city council or any decision-making circles It feels like we are disenfranchised So this is a step toward being a part of the community In reality, we are part of the fabric of Eden Prairie Nobody can deny that But we need to sit in the decision-making table And this is the first step towards that goal Thank you very much for coming and for your support Next, I would like to introduce To welcome to the microphone Our brother Abdul Asis Sugulla who will say few words of support
الحمد لله رب العالمين و سلامة و سلام على رسول الله صلى الله عليه وسلم We're here today to support our brother our friend Assad Khalif who I know him almost fifteen years I have seen him many times that he's doing good thing for the community and we have to support him Assad is very consistent what he does He started organization for almost fifteen years and he still he does that So that's good thing That's somebody who is consistent doing something is very good And one thing we realize is somebody when you are becoming a politician people start from board of education, that's where you start So you know, that's where everybody started, you know, from board of education and then go to maybe council member and then from there So Assad has the talent to do that So we have to support him as a community Also, we have to build alliances, you know We can board him in a member board with the Somali community We have to support or build alliances Our neighbors, people here, they can help you You know, help whatever you can, support him financially And for us, we have to do that But we need the support for others, Insha Allah So I've been told that eighteen percent of students in Aribari are Somalis So we need to sit, we need to have a position on the table to discuss our future, our children's education future So that's something that really we have to support people like Assad who is really trying to have, to help our community and stand by for that So I thank you for coming tonight here We are really helping Assad whatever we can We can tell our friends to help as well So thank you very much ولا ليال عاو وحن اني مسلاو شايه سهرنا كوشيا غبا ولا كان Assad ان عاو سغوني بن سبورغرينو او عرارييا كورستيغا قيبت متقان اسکولدا او رنتي مهيمتا او ماداما اينو هاي بقولكي بستيبت وارددا Somali دا هرك ديجاتا اينئي متقان او قف نوجو ومش كور هيا متقان رماها كوسابسنت تعليم تعروط سدي متقان روع فايسنلاهين وحن كلوشيا غرونتي اه اينو داد كنايبرسكي ناه او متقان درسكي اه او لالالدستو متقان سبور لغيهالو سي اينو اسو باهنو او متقان رنتي اينو بوستش كالو هالو اد بادم هاسنتيني ماتكاتي مادين كلمدن هالغارسي وداد كالونا كامغانو او متقان رنتي سلاو سبورغريو ولا كان Assad, thank you
Thank you Abdul Asis for the kind words And next Next, I would like to welcome to the microphone A good friend of ours, Yvonne Selsar State Representative for District 48 Yvonne, if you can come here, I can give little introduction She works with the Somali community tirelessly She hears our concerns She supports our goals So please help me welcome Yvonne Selsar
Thank you very much for that lovely introduction I really appreciate it And thank you all for having me speak this evening It is an honor to be here I am State Representative Yvonne Selsar and I do represent Southern Minnetoka and Northern Eden Prairie And it is also my great honor to be asked to speak to you this evening on behalf of my good friend Assad Assad is well-known to all of us as a trusted teacher leader, advocate, and friend Assad, your work as a teacher at both the Central Middle School and Eden Prairie High School has touched so many students in Eden Prairie and I want to thank you for your work there And your leadership Assad as the founder of the New American Academy that has benefited so countless members of our Somali-American students You have led the Somali-American community in so many ways And you have led the community at large in so many ways Assad in many important areas, including education, housing, and new American entrepreneurship Thank you for that also But Assad, you are not done Now is the time for you to lead again in a new and historic way in Eden Prairie It is time for you Assad because you know how to reach out to all people because you are respected by not only the Somali-American community in Eden Prairie but by the entire community in Eden Prairie It is time for you Assad because you will serve all the children in Eden Prairie School District well and because you understand the major challenges faced by the Somali-American families and children in our community and because you will act to meet those challenges So Assad, it is time for you to become the first Somali-American to be elected to office in the city of Eden Prairie But as we all know, Assad will not succeed without our help Assad needs us to donate whatever we can today so that he can get the word out about his candidacy and the great things he's going to do for our children in Eden Prairie Successful campaigns take money and I know you will stand with Assad this evening as I am and donate generously Finally, it will take the vote of each and every one of you to get Assad elected Every vote counts, and I know that personally I won my last election by forty-one votes out of nineteen thousand votes cast So your vote counts, and you need to vote And I know that everyone here will vote That's why you're here tonight because you're active, you're committed, you're involved, and you're engaged But Assad needs you to do more He needs you to be an advocate He needs you to talk to your friends, neighbors, community members He needs you to stress the importance that they have to vote And you know what? If they don't have a babysitter, they can bring the kids Let them watch Democracy in Action So Assad and his team are here to tell you more about the particulars of voting I know that there's a huge effort out to do early voting And if we get all of the Somali-Americans that can vote to the polls if we get our friends in the greater community and I'm working on that, and Joan's working on that and so many of us are working on that to vote for Assad Ali Wade Assad will be the first Somali-American to serve on the Eden Prairie School Board So, and I just want to say Assad I started on the Hopkins School Board, so watch out Assad
Thank you Yvonne Assad needs three thousand votes We will try our best, and we have the experience For the last twelve years, we've been knocking doors voting for people like Yvonne so we can mobilize the community We are hoping to get at least two thousand from the Somali community God help us, we will do that Next, I would like to welcome David Bruce, DFL Field Officer to say a few words of support We built a network of friends that support us and you'll meet some of them tonight
Thank you So in the next coming weeks, we really need your help We need the community to mobilize and to actually get out and vote I had already talked to the school board elections and only sixty-five people so far have voted So I can probably count some of you that have not been to the polls yet and we will help you get there Some of the other ways that you can help is by donating Some of you have already taken that Whatever amount you can give out of your pocket, out of your spare money to this campaign really does go a long way in helping us reach the voters that we can't get to in these short three weeks Drive your friends, drive your neighbors Early voting hours have already begun since September eighteenth and it's at the school administration office So when you go there, make sure that you have somebody If you aren't registered, make sure that you have the proper things to actually get registered Somebody to come with you if you need help with the ballot We are more than happy to help arrange that The other thing we certainly need is people to help door knock Door knock in your apartment building, door knock in your neighborhood, in your community Make sure that they know that they can actually vote There is an election It's on the November third The polls are open right now, starting this next week from eight to four thirty and then eight to five on the Saturday before the election So you know in your family who has not voted, who can vote Make sure that they get there We need Assad on the school board We need Somali representation in your community The other thing for Election Day We need people to drive their neighbors to the actual polls so that they can vote on Election Day You have the right to cast your vote on Election Day and you do have time off from work to actually do that There's a state-protected right and your duty as an American citizen to actually cast that vote Again, we need to stress that We need Somali representation from Eden Prairie on the school board so that you can actually make a difference in your community and be heard So, thank you very much
Thank you David Next, I would like to welcome to the microphone Joan Howe-Poles, a good friend of ours who helped us We meet every Sunday for the last two months to plan this and to come up with a strategy and Joan is a member of that team
Thank you, hi I'm Joan Howe-Poles I ran for the State House of Representatives in District 48B in the last election and so I have a lot of experience knocking on doors and making phone calls and by the way, also fundraising So I really want to stress that Whatever you can give, whatever a significant amount for you It doesn't matter if it's five dollars or five hundred dollars, which would be great I know for myself, in my campaign The first question I asked was, "What does all that money go for?" Well, printing and postage, really I mean, it's just the paper and the printing and the postage It does cost a lot of money to send those flyers to the doors that we need to get to So if you can help Assad out, please, please do that I'm here to tell you a little bit about what we have planned for next weekend It is going to be a lot of fun because door knocking is the best part of campaigning as far as I'm concerned We get out and we talk to the community We knock on the doors, we speak on behalf of Assad We speak our support for him and we actually empower our fellow citizens to exercise their right to vote And that is only all good So what we're gonna do is next weekend we're gonna launch a couple of door knocks out of my house which is in Eden Prairie, just where Pioneer Trail and Del Road meet And we're going to have a training to start so you don't just get sent out to the doors without knowing what you're gonna do and say We're also hoping, I'm hoping to have enough experienced people who have been at doors to partner with people that don't have experience so that we're going as a community out to the doors to meet the community So it's my favorite part of campaigning I hope it's yours too I see there are several people in the room that were door knocking during my campaign that are powerful, smart, creative, wonderful people that you'll all get to meet But come, we do a little bit of training We go out to the doors and we come back We're gonna do it in two shifts ten to one, and then one to four But if those times don't work for you, that's okay Tell us when you're coming and we'll work that out Somebody will be there So how many people are gonna come knock on doors next weekend? Wow, wow, okay, awesome If you push your hand up, make sure you write it down and we'll have another communication out there to everyone We'll be in touch with you by way of the lists where you signed up So if you didn't sign up when you came in make sure that you get signed up so that we can be in communication with you and you can tell us you're coming for sure and what shift And that's it, thank you
Thanks Joan Howe وحن يردا ان كاحس سيو سووبتا تاگيرينو Assad ماشان مركان نمت مبنال عقول نمبا معلمين تمويتي وحن ير علماء كلاسكا كوجرا دوس لغادا عقول نم حاسا ميسا او اردي كلان دا هاوت رجول وحن كوكاليفني ايني هاي رغريان Somali معلين كعاين كوسيا كلاسكا داحديسا تادان اني Assad كوجرنو عالاسكولو المانتري Somali دا اوببتينو وحن نغودا بقولكي لحدن اسکول مركو فخر اوببتو وحن لو هواينو هوس جليو دستريغوا وحن اسکورها ان ان شنتا اسکول لو قايب Somali دا عداان كوا اد وتقالمك فراهالس بولتكي وحن اسونن وحن اسامينين وحن اوتك مانان لين ماش جودا هيدا فلان كاقيال غيلينين مركو والو باهنياي ان Assad تاگانو سي ادليست جودا ها ومرمو Next, I would like to welcome a highly respected Somali elder General Mohamed Ismail Ghadi Highly decorated Somali general
انغوبيسن كانو قبانين بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم دور شدا Assad I will speak Somali if you don't mind Then someone will interpret for you هورتا ماشان انغا دانه ادياشيا اي عوقاشيا الين يردا اي وحن غرتكي ايدن بريري دجن مارت مقالدا كو وحن كبلاو نئي انو لاشيرنو Assad وحن نغوا عنصني مركا اس اينو ماشان هاد سيد احمد اوشياقاي يبان اوشياقتاي ان انو اوتك يالانو ايدن بريري اسکول بورت اد Assad بنو ودورانئي وحن او دورانئي وحن ويان سيد هاد احمد ايدينشياقاي او قالن كاو قلمو سيد او هو قلمو سيد او نو دفاع هيا اي اقونت او اولي هاي اي اكسبيرينس كاولي ادياشين تيدو اسکوافا هل كاسا نكدو لني باهدا وحن ويان احمد بايدينشياقاي وادغران كريسان اد اد بنو وباهن هاي ان مارت ان قف كيالانو جودا ماش انغا ي gaan ادغا هاد وان سنداو نا وحن كادمبييا وحن سغالسنا اين اسکولدا كشاقيني وحن او شاقيني وحن ويان ويا ارقنيمدا ان سوا اركاي وحن او تيجوا اي وحن اركا باهدا علماء Somali دا هيسا اي او جوبه هينين ان قان لاسيو اسکولدا مركا وحن لها ورها دي ادان مارك تيماش سجاتكتو ان تانو دم ادياعمي وهداياعميا هاد ان سيبونا جا الحمد لله رب العالمين ماش وانو وباهن هاي Assad نو وانو اغنيه وحن كاغانداو نا Insha Allah اقونتيا دادنيميا دا كرتيدو اللي هاي يبان ان تا شاектا كفلان وله يغور مري وحن لو وحن شاقيلا وحن في عمبي كشاектا وردا با اما قون اما كرتي اما وهينو هاد وحن ويان سيد ان اوغوان سانني ماشان وحن لو باهنياي داد كاو قل لا عقبدا ايال تاگيراخ لغصو بورغا هاد وحن شالي ديجي سيني نيوسك دونالد ترام اد وجو سودن اي سغال ميلين ايالو اروري وان نكا او جو ميليونيرس مركا Assad Assad او بانانو ماليني هانو اسكربا هاي بل ورغدا Assad اولو دا جارسينيا ايدن بريري مغي او كعيان او كليه دا لين يردا لاشاقينيسا ترسپورتيشنك ميلها لجيني او كن لجيني اينو كودينو مار ويا انغا وباهن ان تي اسagu وباهنان لها مش انغا ديبادك اريعين مركا مهيم كي يقوا وحن ويان هورتا داد كان ادبي امهت سينين هادلئي وهادل كي يغور يي ادبي شرف لايوا هادلئي داد كي نسو حاضري ادبا او جمهت علينيا رجغون غابيا احمد ايومارك تجروب كالغون غابيا اجعن سي ادبا او جمهت علينيا هاد وحن ويان تشوف كينو جعن تجلينو او انو مارك تديغ في عم انو بهنو ان تا صادن كروا وسلام عليكم ورحمة الله وبركاته
Thank you General Mohamed for the support and for the encouragement He thanked you specifically I have to mention that, since he spoke Somali Next, I would like to Let me tell you something Assad will not gain anything from this office They pay like three hundred dollars a month He will be working for us So let's not forget that He is putting his neck on the line for us and we have to support him Next, I would like to welcome Hamzi Orfa Founder and Executive Director of Taio Organization
السلام عليكم وحن علماد وماركت مركا اد امه حاضريان وحن سخو سبي شو بتا الهيك عابسو رنتي نحرك هادلكا سبيكرسي يغوري او تناالكاد وودنبي باماركتي اي احمد رنتي فرينتي سيو قيمها بناد او اه
Again, say that Support Assad and Ghazi was here So brother Ghazi, the good thing is that after coming Ghazi, Ghazi means victorious So yeah, so it's a good, it's a kind of a good gesture, I'm coming after Ghazi And one thing common between Assad and myself is that Assad is Name is Assad's meaning is lion in Arabic And Barber's meaning is lion in Turkish I have one more connection, thank you brother
Thank you Barber You have to remember The beauty of our democracy is one man, one vote It doesn't matter whether you are a millionaire or a former refugee You cast that vote and it makes a difference Don't say, "What am I gonna do? How can I elect Assad?" No, Yvonne won by forty votes Every vote counts, so come out and vote Next, I would like to welcome My friend Mohamed Ismail, a community leader, to say a word
بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم مركو وريسو وان سلاميان مضينيان يمروين فرحاد وين بيتا هيا انك سوا قيبغلو ان حفلد ان لغوتا تاگيريا Assad Khalif Assad انغا سفي عمبا وغانا ان اسكمن اللي هي كل الهي با ناركا مارتا ملاعين كرباين كاسارنتا هاي Assad وحن كول شاقينياني اسغا CMS Central Middle School ان كول شاقينئي ان هر كاسو مارك استودن تيتشين كيسيا ايو معلمو او كنو قدا كدبنا حو وريقاي ان هاي سكولك كدبنا مارتي Organization او داد كو حو قبت او New American Academy وان نبو بسيليا وحيةي هول بدن بو قبتاي After School Barakram بو وحيةي ان هول بالارن ايو قبتاي تنبيزنيسكا وطي شاقيسيا يفون ان Assad مركا وان نكا نعاسا تعليم تيسنا وان ندماسترناو داد كا هتاد اسکول بوركا ايدن بريري سان كو غا قار بيرلي بس كهانچرين هاي سكوري وحاسكا بهن اسagu MBA وحيستا معلمو وحيستا او شادا دي تيتشين كو وحيستا وحن او در Community and Organization شانسناو شاقيني او العترافسياي ايو كيا Executive Director وانن اباه او عرر بولاي عرطيسا ان ويل كيسادو او سينير معلمين هر قوم فديا ولا كي سان كور كابه هاي مات مركا وانن الا nine six كي هالك ان تشوغي ويه مركا ارنتا والغاسو دا هاي هاد كور بعتري ماليسا كرال سوبرتان دا تيجي هورا ان بدن بو سكتاي دي مارتي احمد يمركم ملاه كاقيال غيلين انغو هاد المانة غيل كنمشار ما مش كخادنين لكن وضان لين وحن عتر احمد هاد ديار بتو If you want to change something عتري مارتي run for school board So you can sit by me and then you can say whatever you want That's what Melissa Kral said So it's a law overdue, so we are here today مركا ارنتا الغافايستو داد كان مي اوغابا هيدا هتاد وحن لاغان لاهين نم يغانن مت كالو وحن ياركين تي فيده اي وحن ملاه لغاش شاقيا ايو وحن غرناي هاد كولن باهاد كور لسكي شاكبي مركا وحن لغالياي سا مارتي سبول نما دا اي وحن لو قبتا نن عدانا او ان توزو ابود الحيوري وان سكس لو قايبيا عررتو سكس وان لو قايبيا مت كالو الحيوري سابون هتوا مهيم مركا هل كاس تاگين تا هاي مركا وحن لو باهنيا نير هادو ور سكس لام رابا وحن رابا علماء ان مغناها After School loss Somali وحن رابا تكنولا تشيغنا اي بات كا ميلها لو قايبيني او هوما حافدا ان محالدها ان حافدي ان غريالو ان كا هالك ان مهين مغادي وان لو بيبا West Wind Drive وحن لو باهنيا ان Community gas لغاسا مياي ان مارتي Fiber Optic او هل كالاد كو او علماء هل كاد كن كعياليا هل كاس دiganamba لحدن كاس اينئي مركا اي wireless ايهلكران ويسا مياي ان مركا روحي مركا ان تا او شاقيلا غالبا اي دا ور سكس كو هوما هه ان ارنتا سولو باهنياي وانن ادiga باهيدا دوک وانه Assad مركا انغو Somali وان دا هاي وحن دان دا مارتي شركا لغاسو قيبغلا مركا شركا مركا ان مادن وحن اميسنا هاي بو حيبا ان لقبتاي ور وحن لامقابن شركو مان نماتن ماان تاسكول نماتن وان تشيبكا تشيب كينو وانو غا ايو انغو وكيالا ان تا تفرسيني سان عمر معلمو سا اي هاد كور مركا ور لاغتنا بحية ان مارتي ليرتشركا ليرتشد رابا لو باهنيا انو وحياي وحن كالو كودي رقليا ولي هاد ماش واسكا انصريين ويه داد عدانا هالقدر داد كا مغناها سيندوا هتودعن هاد كور انغو ساسو وانو داعي مركا ان ان تاسن كغوا بينيا Assad نے مارتي الهياليا كولغربغلو وحن ان قبا انغا اميسنا هاي نا هدا نا اميسنا هاي مسوو درافغريان غارين Insha Allah مسوو شتين حافدا يدنا كمسوو تاين اي وحن فرسن لهاي كمانت شرا ان هدانا هدانا نا اميسنا هاي او غول سينيا مركا وحن اميسنا هاي Assad He will win and he will represent not only Somali all the community you know, for the diversity Thank you, Abma Zintin
مربو وحن يربا نيشاقي لابادي كونيتو دابادي وحن اسکو دينئي ان عررتو Somali دا مركا هوم وركلاسيا سيدان ندانك Somali وحن كبرنجينما Fifty percent وحن معلين كودي لها اردي كو سيا غريالو غلسو شاقيا Somali مركو غريكتا و يدي ابي لغادم يغالا وحن قايلين اسدا حسنو وحن دوسو ان انسان ترلفرو عررتو ان هوم وركلاسيا وحن كعيلاو بوليو تدواتا نكون دستريغوا ninety-two million وحن ير ككا و العجم هينو اسدا حسنك بالي مركا اسدا وحوفري American, New American Academy عيل دارتيس يعني اوفبي نادم كباري اسدا حسن بنيا ادم نود هاتا مقبتو او باهي لو يعني ان تاسو ميلين بيكونا ان عروتو قحطيا لكن مالك لين مارتا سوتو اسکول بورك و مجرنو Okay, and next I would like to welcome my good friend, the candidate himself, Assad Ali Wade We have our support Let me give you a little introduction[1765.04]